Mr. Mayor, are you all doing an invocation?
Our in-house substitute. This will be the short version since we have a longer version today at four. Heavenly Father, please bless this meeting that we're about to attend. Bless the information given. Bless the wisdom needed to make decisions for our city. Bless us as we are forever mindful of our important part of the process in determining what is best for the City of Columbia. Please bless our staff, bless all of our citizens, and bless this council as we proceed in this matter. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Don't like the echo, so I was hoping that'll be adjusted. We are continuing on with our budget discussions in preparation to approve our fiscal year 2024-2025 budget on time prior to July 1. And so today, the discussion centers around our general fund, the fiscal year 2024-2025 proposed general fund budget. Missy, Jeff, and I will work you through the slides today. Hopefully, you had time to look at the memo leading up to today's discussion. And the main thing I can tell you, just keeping it short and sweet from that memo, is this is pretty much a status quo budget as far as I'm concerned. We have a lot of wonderful things that meet your strategic outcomes that are underway, and we want to complete there, of course, as with any of the years leading up to this, and this is no different, always strains on the general fund that we are creative about working around so that hopefully we never jeopardize internal services and the basic public services that we must provide our citizens. And that is accomplished with this budget, which is in balance. But in addition to that, we know that there are certain key items that we talked about in our recent retreat that focus on catalyst projects for economic development in our corridors of the city and housing. And so one of the things that I wanted to do as we prepared the general fund is lean into those items that you all have ongoing, have had ongoing priorities placed, whether it be now a real urgent focus on economic development from a real estate perspective, housing, beautification, those areas that you've made very clear that you want us to continue to fund. You'll see that in this budget. And as we move forward with the discussion today, Jeff and Missy will highlight some additional items, too, that we hope for you to consider. But in general terms, this is a pretty straightforward budget, very lean, but also working to complete items that we've been talking with you all about over the last two years. Missy? And oh, and I will say, Missy, we don't think we're going to be terribly long, and so I would love if you're willing for us to go ahead and move into executive session so you don't have to do all of it after tonight's four o'clock meeting. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Wilson, City Council. Thank you all very much. We are glad to be here with you today for another budget workshop with regards to our 24-25 budget. Today, we'll be discussing the city manager's proposed budget for the general fund, which obviously, as Ms. Wilson mentioned, a lot of things to highlight and discuss. For today, we'll highlight some of the items that were brought up to you in council's attention. There we go. Okay. Went too fast. There we go. So we're going to highlight general fund revenues. We're going to delve a little bit into, a little deeper into, property taxes and how those property taxes are just a little primer on property taxes with it being a reassessment year, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in detail with Jeff. We'll also review some expenditure highlights that were pointed out to you in the budget that was provided with you for today's agenda. The budget, of course, is a financial plan. And like with any plan, there are goals that you outlined to be met. And so the budget goals that we shared with you all during the retreat, of course, is meeting strategic alignment with city council strategic outcomes, along with goals for our community and our staff goals. And of course, we want to balance those goals and those expenditures with long-term goals with short-term needs. We also want to make sure that we are addressing ongoing and new commitments that we have funded with one-time revenues. The city manager and executive staff and departments have remained committed to retention and recruitment. So employee engagement, professional development, and employee evaluation process remains frontline in this coming fiscal year as well. A commitment to advancing real estate development and diverse housing opportunities that have been discussed during the retreat as well and with you during other conversations. Maintaining our service levels, we want to make sure that we continue to provide the same level of service to our employees, I mean, to our citizens and our customers, and manage that increasing cost within the revenues that we have available to us. And of course, with that, we want to make sure that our customers are having a good experience and value for the services that they receive. The assumptions that we have used to prepare this budget, as mentioned, is to maintain our service levels and preserving our fiscal integrity. We want to remain focused on fiscal stability, continuity, and alignment with strategic objectives. Prioritization, we often say the city has funding available for a lot of things, but not funding for everything. So we have to prioritize those different wants and needs. So in this budget, we have highlighted that we have funded a lot of those strategic outcome-based initiatives, as well as ongoing services and activities, but not all activities, not all requests that departments submit are funded. So some of those items are deferred or reduced. And with this, the proposed budget continues to advance city council's strategic objectives. We'll talk a little bit about revenues to start. Most of this you've seen in prior conversations, but we'd like to make sure that everyone remains sort of primed on what the different jargon that sometimes we can throw out, and since we are, the budget is very much a public process, we want to make sure that folks are able to follow along with the conversations. And one of the main components of the budget is, of course, our revenues. In this case, we'll be talking about our general fund revenues, which is our property taxes, licenses, permits, charges for services, fines, forfeitures, and then, of course, transfers. So the general fund proposed budget for 24-25, we have made some slight adjustments since the information we first presented to city council during your workshop or retreat in March. The total revenues for the general fund projected is $153,698, which is roughly a $7 million increase over the current year budget, about 4.8%. Most of that coming from property taxes and in terms of growth of our property tax collections. Then in transfers in, other financing sources and uses, that proposed budget is $33.6 million. It's roughly 9.8. That's a 41% increase. That's obviously a very big jump. The largest of that increase is coming from the proposed increase in our capital lease proceeds. We'll talk a little bit more about what the capital lease proceeds are, which is what we use to finance our rolling stock primarily and other major equipment for the general fund and some technology reassessments as well, replacements. Also, there is an increase in the, a slight increase to hospitality tax and increase in the water and sewer cost allocation. Talk about those a little bit further as we go along. So total overall increase in the general fund budget between revenues and transfers in is $16.7 million, which is a 9.8% increase over budget, current year adopted budget. As mentioned, we've already highlighted and gone through those different activities there with the highlights of our revenue streams. Talking a little bit about our revenues, property taxes make up, and licenses and permits combined make up about 60% of the general fund's total budget, obviously property taxes being the largest single source. Licenses and permits total about $44 million in this projected budget. About 41 million of that is from the different license fees that we have, as well as franchise fees, with a slightly smaller portion of that coming from our building and other permit revenues. During the retreat, we did talk with you all about doing five-year projections, and we do have some five-year projections for you on our revenues that we'll share as well. It's a little too much to sort of show on one slide. It's mostly, yeah, sure, it's just for informational purposes. Of course, these are all estimates. They are always subject to change, as we like to say and disclaimer in terms of what we're looking at. Our crystal ball is not always that clear, but we try to make sure we utilize what we know with regards to collection rates and experiences. And of course, as we've mentioned, we do have, you know, the city's general fund budget is made up of a couple of different one-time revenues. We have the use of the American Rescue Plan Fund. This will be the last year of those general fund proceeds, so that's reflected at $2.5 million in this budget. $2 million of that is the loss revenue reserve that we have programmed as a part of the, we programmed for three years as a general fund revenues. This will be the last year. Another $500,000 of that is continuation of our grant consulting contract, so that is reflected at 2.5, and that's what the increase in the $500,000 is for. We do have, we have reflected, since the retreat in March, we have reflected use of unappropriated surplus or general fund fund balance of about $3 million. So that would be a continuation of the current years as well. Parking fund remains $500,000. Water and sewer reflects the largest increase, and that was for the adjustments for the addition of the 400 Laurel Street facility for the Center for Law Enforcement and Judicial Center. All right, with that, are there any questions about specific revenues? Otherwise, we'll delve into a little bit more about property taxes and discussions about reassessment and the way that property taxes are.
Mr. Mayor. It feels so much more formal like this as opposed to the conference room. But so for the transfers in for the parking fund, I know we've talked about there being potentially rate changes for parking. Is that transfer in going to change with increased revenue?
Most likely not at this point until we, once those rates are adjusted, then we would have to do another evaluation to see whether or not. But most of those rates would end up being applied towards capital.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Eric and I were sidebarred, and I missed the first part of your question.
I just, I was, you know, we've had some conversations about potentially changing some of the rates for parking and just wanted to know if that would impact the transfer.
Right. And so I hadn't caught up with you. I've caught up with a few of you as I've seen you, and I was going to talk about this with you in a little while today. I'm holding, we're absolutely moving forward with the parking rate increase. I want to push that more to a January timeframe versus doing it in conjunction with the budget and the budget public hearing right now so we can really focus our attention on getting and educating our citizens and customers about that coming up. And so it definitely won't be reflected right now, but we've all talked with, you know, Missy, Jeff, and I about bond coverages and that sort of thing. None of that is in jeopardy in any way, and so we'll be updating you as we go along over the next six months on the timing of it.
And then one more question. The American Rescue Plan, for the public's knowledge, that 2.5 million is already allocated.
Yes, ma'am. It is already allocated and included in the budget.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Missy, so we used American Rescue Plan, other one-time COVID monies to, towards initiatives, recruitment, retention, knowing that we would have to keep that funding the same rate moving forward for time.
Yes.
Has that been considered and where, how those revenues will stay at that level?
So some of that will come through with, as with the projections that we look at in terms of five-year, looking out, growth in the overall budget as well.
I mean, I see property taxes as a $6 million bump in the projection. I mean, are you looking, is that how we're going to sustain, keep those levels sustained for CPT, fire, employees?
It'd be a combination of those different sources of revenues, as well as potentially, there's always the opportunity, as well as reallocation of existing programmatic things. But at this point, that's where we have always typically allocated, is looking at our growth of revenues in terms of how it's going to be able to absorb. Of course, there are a number of those things that are pretty significant, so we will need to be evaluating over time in terms of how to sustain those going forward beyond this current budget.
But do you feel good about sustaining those levels currently?
Yes.
Sure.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So next, we'll talk a little bit about property taxes. And for that point, we'll turn over to Mr. Palin, and he will talk a little bit more about some projections with regards to reassessment.
Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me? Now, can you hear me? Kind of. The page Missy left up, that shows our property tax assessments for the last, I don't know, I can't see it. I'll say 20 years, but that's our growth. Every five years, and so for a lot of us, this is going to be new, every five years, every county has to, throughout the state, under state law, has to go through a reassessment of the property values. It's ideally an opportunity to true up to true value of the properties, which in general typically go up. When we do that each year, in addition to truing that value up, we're required as a taxing entity to roll back our taxes. In theory, if the properties this year generate $65 million in taxes, next year, those very same properties, when they had the increased value, should only generate 65 million. So that means we'll roll back our taxes, our tax millage rate. We've gotten preliminary information from the county auditor's office. Total, just on real property growth this year, looks like it's going to be in excess of about 13%. And again, these are estimates, subject to change. We won't get final numbers till after June 30, and then we'll work with the county auditor's office to make sure we have the right numbers on that. And I say that's a growth of 13%. By the time you roll that in with all of the other properties, cars, business, personal property, all of that, it'll bring that down a little bit, under 10% will be the total growth. But we'll bring the final numbers to y'all at some point, and we did this five years ago. Don't we return for ordinance to adjust that? At some point, probably late August, early September, we'll come back with a budget amendment that'll actually set the new millage tax rate. So this occurs every five years, so we probably won't have this discussion again for five more years. Any questions on that?
The roll, you said you would do a rollback, I guess, the first year? Is it just that one year?
Well, yeah, but it'll continue throughout. So if we roll from 93 to 88 mils, then it'll be 88 mils going forward because the value is already there. Now, the one thing that's not included in that also is any new growth. So if you have new growth through transfer of sale or just through development, you know, we've had a lot of development these last couple of years, so we're kind of anticipating more in that 5% growth range instead of 2%. So that part isn't taken into consideration, so we still have property tax growth through that.
Which I think to Mr. Brennan's previous question, that that's another reason I think we feel particularly comfortable with. You were right on point, the things that, you know, we are doing to engage our employees and have them, give them the ability to look at where they are in the city as an employee and their growth in the city as an employee with merit increases, and of course, the sustained police and fire increases. This is very, this is a good sign, and it's helpful. So I think as Jeff and Missy have mentioned, the numbers you see today may adjust a little bit prior to us advertising the budget to take into account the adjustments we make as a result of the rollback.
I'd also add, and this goes back to your question before, from this sheet right here, when you look at the years past and highlight it as a projection for the upcoming year, when you look at those next four years, you know, we have a tendency to be a little conservative on those numbers. So when you take a look at the fiscal year 2026 numbers, you're going to see property tax grew 3.28%. If you go back to our last 10 years and even last five years, that was a pretty good, strong number, actually. The last year and a half to two years, we've been seeing higher growth, closer to 5%. So when we get the actual numbers, which we won't have until about August, September, we'll take a look at that, and that's when we'll start making projections for the following year as well. So I'd anticipate seeing that change. Any other questions on reassessment or anything, really? While I'm standing here.
I'm shocked that your projections are conservative, by the way.
I know, I know. It's shocking. 3.28, though, historically is actually an aggressive number, so. Well, we could do that, but then everyone will get scared, so we won't do that.
Just 4.8.
Okay. Oh, yeah, 4.8 from the prior.
Thank you, Jeff. Just keep going. Y'all getting, y'all gonna keep going? Y'all gonna keep going?
Yeah.
I would, but it's up to y'all.
All right, we're going to move on past, did you want to comment?
So this table here is our development incentive, all the different projects that we've had. So back in March, when we met, we had a discussion about taking a look in the future, what type of taxes, when they start paying the full amount off of existing projects. So this would be a lot of the student housing projects. You'll see the first ones don't fall off for about two more years, but then you, we're now starting to track how that growth of when they come off, that's the additional revenue, and that's on projects one through seven on there. If you slide over to projects eight through 10, that's actually new projects that we voted on, but they may be broken ground, but they haven't started paying taxes yet. So that'll be additional new tax money coming in. Now, I will tell you, when you look at the forecasts on that prior, we haven't figured a way to properly work this number into that forecast yet and add in additional growth. We're working through how that reflects, and probably going to take about one to two years to see how it really reflects, but now that we know how much it is, we can subtract that out of the future growth that we see. So that's a lot of gobbledygook talk to say that it's kind of complicated, and probably over the next two years, this particular spreadsheet and growth will be more, we'll see a better, accurate picture of how these development incentive projects affect our tax base.
I like this a lot, and hopefully we'll have projects 11 through 20 on there at some point.
I hope we do, too. I think we will.
I do, too.
Any questions on that? And y'all know, you can always call or email after the fact, too, so.
Okay. So that shapes our revenue picture for the general fund, so now we'll move on into general fund expenditure highlights and for the operating budget, which of course includes staffing, our capital outlays, supplies, and as well as non-departmental and transfers out. And we'll focus a little bit to start with on general fund departments. The general fund proposed budget for departments is an increase of a little over $10 million for 24-25 over the current year approved budget. Right at 6.9%, which is in line with our revenue growth. Transfers out, and I'll go into a little bit more on these as well. Transfers out, or starting with the non-departmental, there's an increase there of $620,000, which is about 8.7%. Most of that increase is coming from the increase in our lease payment or our capital purchase program and an increase in the Rishon County Detention Center per diem, and that's mostly based on just where we have been going with actual payments for the per diem in terms of the number of days per prisoner. There is not, at this point, a proposed rate increase that we are aware of. Next is transfers out. That totals $22.8 million, and we programmed the capital replacement program funding there, the $15 million. We actually don't transfer those funds out. We actually allocate those funds to the different departments as expenditures are being performed based on the purchase, the item being purchased. So ultimately, those expenses will be reflected in the department's budget that is purchasing the equipment. And of course, that also includes our debt service, transfers to component units, and then internal service funds. As an overall picture of the general fund budget, public safety, of course, makes up the majority of the budget, about 45% of this budget. That's before we apply the capital replacements, the $15 million capital replacements. In the total, public safety budgets is $83.4 million, which is an increase of about 6 million or 9.1%. It represents 45% of the general fund overall in this budget, this before capital is applied, and about 41% of the increase in the budget. If I were to, if I were to adjust for the capital and just look at just pure budget line items, public safety is receiving about 60% of the general fund increase in department budget spending. The majority of that is coming from annualizing certain costs that have been previously funded with one-time funds, such as grants. And so, Mr. Brennan, to your point as well, most of these one-time items are really being reflected now in this budget, which is what makes up, of course, a lot of the increase. The majority of that coming from a couple of the different police department and technology initiatives. The, that would be ShotSpotter, that would also be for the Axon body cameras, as well as the security camera contracts.
Question for you. Is the additional $200,000 as proposed to go to the solicitor's office included in that number? So I'm looking at adopted for '23, '24 is $500,000. For '24, '25, it's proposed to be $700,000?
No, I'm sorry, that's the per diem. The solicitor's office budget is still 215, proposed at 215.
Okay.
It rolls over.
I see. I'm looking up a line.
Sorry.
No, you're, that's me for not being able to see, so I'm sorry.
So the solicitor and the public defender has already indicated to us they have not requested an increase in this coming year.
Thank you.
Sure. The other significant increase in public safety in the police department's budget is the addition of the lease for the new City of Columbia Law Enforcement and Judicial Center at 400 Laurel. There's about $1.7 million reflected in the police department's budget and another million or so in general services for the ongoing operations and maintenance and one additional staff person. Public Works budget is about $24.3 million, which is an increase of 2.5%, and it does increase, it does include the continuation of the beautification and gateway program initiatives. Parks and Recreation's budget is $15 million, an increase of 5.7%. That increase is primarily for an initial investment in the ongoing operations for the addition of Finley Park reopening that's slated for next September. Of course, Parks and Recreation will need to begin programming and purchasing items in preparation for that opening in September. for that opening in September. The actual estimated annual operation cost is 2.1, is about $2 million for the Finley General Services budget is about, is another increase of about $5 million, which is an increase, again, about 1 million or 4.6%. That, again, is for the addition of the Law Enforcement and Judicial Center. General Services is where the majority of the city's building facilities are, are managed and maintained for city, for the city general fund activities. Budget program management has, reflects a $500,000 for grant consulting continuation for, continuation of those contracted services. And as mentioned, the capital lease is an increase of, it's a $15 million proposed budget with an increase of 6 million. That's all in proceeds from the, from the actual lease. The debt service, as we mentioned previously, is about 6.6 million for the current lease and prior, prior year leases. We have recommended and proposed an increase in that allocation in order to better meet our ongoing needs for upgrading and replacing our capital equipment. We've funded about 9 million in most recent years. It really is not enough to sustain the cost of our replacement fleet going forward, so this is to help get us closer to what that annual replacement cycle would be. The actual replacement is closer to 30 million. 15 million would allow us to be able to fund a significant improvement on what we have funded in recent years. Debt service, our total debt service with both our geobonds and other bonds, as well as our lease, is about 10.2 million. And then we have a reserve of about $500,000 budgeted at this time. Of course, we, we have made mention to the fact that this budget reflects a number of initiatives that are moving forward and that we have been able to retain or sustain within this budget, those things that have been prior commitments as well as continued additions. Of course, we can't fund every request that comes through, so we have to make significant and strategic investments. One of the most significant areas right now is the fact that, of funding for the general capital projects. What we have done in years past is we've allocated funding towards those initiatives during surplus period. In the previous two years, the council has funded significant amount of, of funding towards those different capital projects. We would also look at some other one-time type of activities or expenses that are, are not included in here that may not be capital. Lastly, just reviewing our budget schedule, we have two more budget workshops with you next week, May 14, and then we will also review another one for May 21. Next week is when we actually advertise the budget, and as mentioned, the budget will, we will make some slight adjustments to the general fund before we actually advertise The public hearing and first reading is scheduled for your first council meeting in June, which is June the 4th. Second meeting is, second reading will be June 18, and then, of course, budget implementation is July 1. With that, that is a highlight and review of the city's general fund, city manager's proposed budget for the general fund for 2425.
Any questions for council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Missy, the next two work sessions, what, what are the topics for the, specifically for that budget?
We would still need to bring forward to you our water and sewer proposed budget, our stormwater and parking.
So when, when can we see recommended, for example, parks and rec, capital improvement projects, stuff like that?
So at this point, this budget doesn't reflect funding for those, so we would bring those forward to you during a, when we bring forward allocations for, hopefully out of surplus funding.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up to that, I'd be interested in understanding what the increases for each of the departments are for. It doesn't have to be super specific, but I'd like to just understand that. Are we going to have a conversation around that, or?
Yeah, the, I think the highlighted items, Dr. Bustle, that on the slides that we just went through are the more significant ones that reflected any increases. The other increases really have to do with, you know, their personnel numbers, so reflecting the merit increase.
Cost of.
Cost of, yeah, benefits adjustments is what you say. Is there anything I'm missing on that?
Those are the primary ones we've highlighted, most of the significant increases in the budgets.
But if you want any additional detail, just let us know, we're happy to get that to you.
If there's anyone in particular.
Yeah.
I would suggest that if we have any specific question, we could bring it to the next budget hearing as well, or send it to staff ahead of time, so that we can prepare to have that discussion around the table.
Sounds good.
Because next time, we will be around the table.
Yes, we will, and the, the questions too about capital, so we have a whole list for you of things, again, you know, with this being a lean budget in general terms, we've done that work with departments as far as things they requested that didn't make their way into the budget. But again, as Missy referenced and Jeff did too, when we oftentimes bring back fund balance, that was the opportunity there to hopefully address some of those things.
I was about to say, too, sometimes it may be helpful to know, from the Parks and Rec standpoint, I don't know why we're all in the Parks and Rec, but to know what is funded for the upcoming year, and occasionally for, for each of the parks, just so I can stay ahead of it, because my community folks are always talking to Randy and getting information. They're like, when are we going to do the, the benches? And I'm like, hmm, you know, I don't really know, and I don't want a whole bunch of detail, but it would be good for us to know this is what we're doing this year.
Sure.
And across the board, just so I can sound like I'm keeping up. So I, so I will be keeping up.
What's proposed for next year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can definitely do that. Henry, did you want to speak to anything about Parks and Rec in particular? But those, that certainly is too what we're hearing when we've been doing the master planning sessions. I think there are two more in the districts coming up. All great feedback that we're hearing in the community, and would love to get even more people out to those sessions, because I think the consultants done a good job, too, in each particular district, talking about things that have been accomplished and things on the horizon, but we'll definitely make sure in an upcoming session, we focus on Parks and Recreation.
And I, I thought that the meeting in Hyde Park, can you hear me? I thought that the meeting in Hyde Park went really well.
Mm-hmm.
I just emphasized, let's make sure we get input from the kids, because I do believe adults are focusing on certain things that really don't faze the children sometimes.
Sure.
And so I will have your back on something, if something is for children, you know, over, you know, the ceiling or something.
Yeah, little Ms. Laura Martin, Tom Martin's daughter, our Parks Planner, she spoke up at the, I think, Woodland Park, yeah, and she was so cute, but she was giving her opinion. Yeah, so young, she's a little lady.
Doesn't scripture say what, teach a child which way they should go?
Yeah, that's right.
So, you know, it'd be good to get some advice from some of these kids, but to extent, we could get kids participate, too. You know, maybe we have some survey or something for some ideas at the park.
That's a great idea.
There may just be some real kids who are concerned about park amenities and not just playing basketball things, and we get, get their feedback. If not, we have to just continue showing them.
Why don't we take advantage of our after-school programs and survey those kids that are coming for the program, and as school ends, I mean, there's, it's just still, you know, it'll help us plan.
Yeah.
Summer camps about to gear up now, so we have a captive audience for sure.
Good meat and potatoes discussion, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you all so much. I do believe, if you would like for us to.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, sorry. I'd like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for receipt of legal advice relating to a pending threatened or potential claim pursuant to SC Code 30-4-70A2, Brittany Ruffin versus Kevin Davis and the City of Columbia, Sherman Green versus City of Columbia and George Simpson, Amber Bagley versus City of Columbia, Catherine Smith versus USC Planning Commission and City of Columbia.
Clear second?
Second.
Got motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman.